Looks like we're live, so you can start, Tom.
Okay, great. Thank you, Carl. Good afternoon, everybody, residents of Kingston. I'm your town administrator, Tom Calder. I'm here with Carl Pike, chairman of the Finance Committee, and Mark Douglas, our Fire Chief and Emergency Response Manager. First of all, thanks again for joining us here today. The two topics we're about to cover are the most important topic, town meeting on Saturday. The first topic, which is going to be covered by our chief, are the safety measures, protocols, and procedures that have been taken to ensure your safety when you attend town meeting on Saturday. As you know, town meeting is all about doing the people's business. No money is spent in town without the approval of town meeting. No zoning bylaws can change without the approval of town meeting. Town meeting is the purest form of government, and without your attendance, we cannot have a productive town meeting. Having said that, Mark Douglas is going to talk about a detailed plan for allowing, not allowing, for ensuring the total health and safety of all of our citizens that attend town meeting. Following Mark's presentation, I'm going to introduce, not only reintroduce Carl Pike, but introduce to you the Finance Manager for the Town of Kingston, Carol McCoy. I'm going to outline very briefly the budget process that has been going on since last December, resulting in a consensus budget we, both the Board of Selectmen and the FinCom have agreed to. And then Carl and Carol are going to get into some specifics, some details of the budget, so that you understand it as thoroughly by the end of this presentation as we do. So with that, it's my great honor to introduce to you the person you know very well, Mark Douglas. Mark has been facilitating the emergency management team throughout the pandemic, along with the leadership of Josh and Elaine and others, our health agent, and was charged with heading up a task force for reopening the town, and that includes a safe town meeting. So with that, Mark, I'd appreciate if you could get into the details of what you and your task force are doing to keep everyone safe at town meeting.
Certainly. Thank you, and good afternoon, everyone. For the last couple of weeks now, we've been, we had analyzed all the possible venues for town meeting. It came down basically to two: Silver Lake Regional High School football field or the normal venue that we use, Kingston Intermediate School. For a variety of reasons, specifically safety-related and our ability to keep people safe, we chose the Kingston Intermediate School. That for a number of reasons. We moved forward with that venue. We made a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. They voted on that a short time ago, so we went forward with that venue. So what I'd like to do this afternoon is simply walk you through, when you walk into town meeting, how it's going to go. I'll stay away from the very specific things that are the moderator's business. In other words, who votes, who speaks, and those types of things. Those are for the moderator to outline. And she's done that in a document she calls key points that are for the voters, and they have been published on the town website. To the best of my knowledge, the most recent version update is posted currently. So for those that are familiar with the Kingston Intermediate School, and I think most are that are interested in town meeting, you enter through the doors off the parking lot from the sidewalks. What you'll see as you approach the town meeting or approach the school is some signs. And one of those signs will be very clear as to, please don't attend town meeting, basically, if you're sick. That is the first and most important rule that we want you to see. If you're feeling ill, have been in contact with a known COVID patient, we ask that you not attend town meeting. That's not to take anyone's rights away. That's simple common sense. We don't want you making anyone else sick. You'll have to wear a mask. That will be posted as well. And those things, those rules are posted under Janet's, the moderator's, key points. So as we approach the doors, you go, you go in, and you'll see markings on the floor. There'll be a six-foot markings. You'll see four tables. Those four tables are precincts. Each of those, one through four, are the normal precincts that we go up to and check in. They'll have screens and one person at each table. And we will go in, walk to the table, check in, and then go in and be seated in the auditorium. We ask that the attendees wait in line, practice social distance until they're directed to the table that they need to go to, move to the appropriate precinct table, get checked in, receive your handouts, which will not be recycled this year, those will be disposed of, and enter the auditorium and be seated. Our auditorium, the normal auditorium that we use at KIS, is the primary area for seating this year. It has approximately 100 seats. The seats that are available to sit in are marked with blue tape. The reason for that, we have spent quite a bit of time measuring to ensure seating distances are approximately six feet. I say approximately because due to installation of those seats, you have a one- or two-inch variance here or there in the auditorium. So you could have one that's 5' 11" and one that's 6' 1" in terms of distance, but it is reasonably speaking appropriate to six feet. The attendees will take their seats and they'll participate in the meeting. I'm speaking strictly about the auditorium now. We'll move to the overflow seating shortly. The attendees will take their seats, participate in the meeting. The moderator, the clerk, town council will be seated on the stage. Town administrator, chairman of Board of Selectmen in front of the stage. Two members of the Finance Committee in front of the stage. Additional seating for boards and committees will be adjacent to their tables. In other words, in front of, in the, we'll call it padded chairs, in the audience, in the general seating area. If you are hearing impaired, this is very important, if you are hearing impaired, please make it known when you check in so that we can seat you in the auditorium. The folks that will have the screen, the closed captions, so that you can read and see what's going on as we usually do at town meeting, that will only be available in the auditorium this year, in this particular venue. So very important that if you're hearing impaired, you mention that. So the meeting will go on as normal, and you will conduct business in the auditorium. The moderator's rules, you'll raise your hand, be called on, so forth, move to the microphone, and speak. One thing we do want to mention to folks, as you do get up and speak, the entire row, and it's not a lot of people in the row as it normally is, will move out, you'll go speak, they'll let you out, you'll move back in, you'll go speak, you'll come back to your row, so on and so forth. So we are going to have to have quite a bit of moving around, but we have set it up so that six-foot distances can be maintained. In the gymnasium, that's overflow seating and no-mask seating. Towards the back of the gymnasium, we've heard that some people will be coming with no masks, so we had to make some allowance for that. The moderator had suggested the back of the gymnasium. That worked well. So the overflow, there's 100 seats in the gymnasium, excuse me, the overflow from the auditorium will go in there, and the no-mask folks will be asked to sit in there. In the gymnasium, there's a video monitor and microphone along with speakers to provide full communication between the two rooms, and there'll be an assistant moderator to assist Janet Wallace in managing the meeting. General topics, the moderator, as always, will control the flow of the meeting, the rules, and when people speak, how they speak, and so forth. If you would, if you are, rather, planning on attending the meeting, and you can, please go to the website and look at the key points for voters. That will be very, very helpful to give you some information as to what the moderator expects. If someone needs to get up after being seated, other attendees will have to get up and step out of the row. We went over that just a moment ago, but I reiterate that courtesy is everything in these circumstances. We need to work together so that we can get our business done. Microphones are suspended from above. That's a little unusual for us. They hang from pedestals that are above you. You won't be able to touch it. You most likely won't be able to reach it. We've spent a tremendous amount of time, along with PAC TV, to make sure that the sound is adequate so that everyone can hear and everyone be heard. You must wear a mask when you are speaking. And as you see the microphone suspended below them, if you look down on the carpet, you'll see two pieces of blue tape, and that's where we want you to put your feet. That's going to be the best place for the microphone to pick up your speech so everyone can be heard. Please follow the signs and floor markings and respect people's space relative to social distancing. Not every place can have a floor marking that you're going to stand. Keep in mind, six feet is six feet. Please try to maintain that distance from folks. Bathrooms are available and will be sanitized on a regular basis. Right now, we're estimating every 15 minutes. Obviously, if we don't see anybody use the bathroom for 15 minutes, they're not going to go in and sanitize it, but as soon as somebody does, they'll take care of that. So you should be safe in those areas. Hand sanitizer will be available, and we ask that you please use that. So at the end of the meeting, we will ask that you stay in your seats, and the seats will be dismissed, pardon the expression, it's very similar to the way you would in school, one at a time, so that we can have an orderly exit of the meeting, hopefully a very, very productive meeting. And we'll have an orderly exit, maintaining the six-foot distance, and we do believe everyone will be very safe. Planning this meeting has been a collaborative effort on the part of many people to provide a venue that's safe and provides our community with the opportunity to take out very necessary business. A safe meeting will, however, rely heavily on the actions of the attendees to respect each other's space and follow the guidelines that we've set forth. And Tom, that's all I have.
Mark, well done. Very informative as usual, and I want to congratulate and thank you and members of your task force. Perhaps you want to list them, members of your task force who have developed this plan, who have worked with you to ensure the safety of our citizens. Could you list the names of the people that were involved with you in the planning process?
Well, in the planning process of the town meeting itself, Gloria from the Selectmen's office, she was extremely helpful, Julie from PAC TV, Janet Wallace, myself, Deputy Adam Hatch. All of the school staff and custodians have been fantastic. Paul Gallagher has been great, the town clerk, Paul Gallagher has been great. And I hope I'm not missing anybody, but those are the ones right off the top of my head. It's been a great collaboration, and I appreciate all of their help.
Well, thank you, Mark. Thanks again. So with that, Mark, I know you've got a lot going on, and if you want to stay with us and hear Carol and Carl show their brilliance, you're welcome to do so. If you need to move on and save some lives, that's okay as well.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Mark. So folks, we're going to move on to the budget portion of this public forum. And again, our objective is to get you into the weeds a bit on what we're doing, how we're doing it, and why we're doing what we're doing. And so, as I said earlier, with us today is Carl Pike, chairman of our Finance Committee, Carol McCoy, who's the Director of Finance for the town, and myself. I'm going to start off with a brief introduction that will give you some sense of how comprehensive and how collaborative the budget process has to be. So why don't I end, why don't I begin with the end? Today, between last night and today, the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee have united, have united, so they have voted a budget. We now have a consensus town budget that we're bringing to town meeting on Saturday. So what Carl and Carol are going to be describing to you is something that was just recently passed, and it's been a collaboration of some pretty bright people since last December. I'd like to give you some sense as to how we put a budget together. In mid-December, we start the process by meeting with each department head to find out what their needs, what their expectations, what their wants are, unique challenges to their business. We then get a group together of members of the Finance Committee, Finance Team, and how's Carol, and town treasurer Ken, tax collector, assessor, and we agree on a revenue number. And we do so based upon estimating what we expect local receipts will be and what we expect state aid will be. And we always play it conservatively and forecast state aid and what the current year is, knowing it typically goes up every, every single year. We work on that project, on that part of the project, right through March. FinCom meets with every one of the department heads on our proposed budget. We end up with a consensus budget as we did last March. We ended up with a consensus fiscal year '21 budget, which lasted not until the paint dried. I mean, we, with COVID and with the crises, the financial crises we're now facing, it was clear that that budget became obsolete very quickly. And Carl and I decided, along with Carol, that we were going to have to start anew. We're going to have to start all over again. And what did we base that new budget on? Well, what we based it on was an expectation that state aid and local receipts were going to be significantly lower than we had expected in our budget. I'm going to leave those details to Carl, because I know, I've heard his remarks, and he does it so much better than I do. So we had to make a decision on how much we thought state aid and local receipts would be decreased, and then build a budget on that. That's where the difficult process began. Because that addresses issues like town services, collective bargaining agreements, a consensus between the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. What would be the cost of unemployment, should we have a reduction in forces? What would be the cost of insurance moving forward, which is one of the largest part of our budget? So the first thing we did is we met with the Wage and Personnel Board. And we asked the Wage and Personnel Board if they would consider a one-year suspension of increases in people's salaries, scheduled increases, and cost of living raises. And after much discussion and heartbreaking deliberation, they took a vote and recommended that pay increases be frozen. So the management team of your town and the professional positions in your town will receive no wage increase and no cost of living increase in fiscal '21, which begins July 1st. The second major component was to see if KTEU, our Kingston Town Employee Union, would agree to work with us in an attempt to maintain services while minimizing reductions in our workforce. A big part of that required that they agree to the same wage freeze that the town managers, management team, the department heads are going to be subject to. And I must say, we negotiated for five, maybe five weeks, and very collaborative, very helpful. The union came up with some great ideas for minimizing a reduction in workforces, came up with some great ideas on consolidation and how workflows should go. They were true partners in that process. But at the end of the day, we reached an impasse, and the union will get their pay increases in fiscal '21. That has resulted in our reductions in the workforce needing to go deeper and more painful. And those reductions will impact town services. We have not yet published the plan, but it will impact the library, the transfer station, streets, trees, and parks, the Council on Aging, almost every department across the board. The Health Department, the Administration, we'll get into greater detail at that time. But the budget that Carol and Carl are going to review with you now includes all of those reductions that are very, very painful. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Carol, and what Carol's going to do is give you some statistics. Very key financial data that everyone should be interested in. When she's done that with that, we're going to turn it over to Carl to give a macro overview. Working with Carl Pike as the chairman of the Board of Selectmen has been really, Carl, and I don't say this just because you're here, has been a great experience for all of us. Carl brings with him a tremendous financial mind, great ideas. He works in collaboration with all of us. Carol is a seasoned municipal financial director. The two of them working together have been an extraordinary team. As we came up with the reorganization plan, the two of them put a cost or a cost savings or a cost increase to every one of those actions. There were no less than 30 iterations of the plan that resulted in the budget being approved yesterday and today by the Board of Selectmen and by the Finance Committee. So it's with great thanks to Carl and Carol that this plan came together. Both of their abilities to lead and to think and to collaborate and to communicate with each other was extraordinary. And that's why, unlike most towns on the South Shore, we're moving forward with our town meeting, we're moving forward with our budget, and we've got total agreement between the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen. So with that, I'm going to ask Carol to take my seat, because I'll have to put on a mask. And I was going to turn the rest of the meeting over to Carl and Carol. And Carl, I'd ask you, when you're done, for you to summarize the meeting and close it for us.
Sure.
Okay, here's Carol. Thank you, Carl.
Hi, everyone. Well, I'm a numbers person. I'm probably going to get right into it. You may appreciate that, you may not, not sure. But we're going to start with our assumptions on the decrease to state aid. What we're expecting, not hoping for, but expecting, is a 15% decrease from state aid, in state aid from FY '20 numbers. So what that relates to is a decrease of $867,000 and some change. That and the decrease in local receipts, we are estimating, I believe that was at around 11% decrease, mostly due to the fact that we're expecting a decrease in meals tax, we're expecting a decrease in motor vehicle excise tax, as well as room tax. And that represents, again, I said, about an 11% decrease from FY '20 numbers. I'm sorry, it represents an 11% decrease from what we originally had as a consensus budget. It's actually an increase over FY '20 numbers by $85,000, but not what we are expecting, certainly. As far as the budget between FY '20 and FY '21, there's a $985,000 decrease, which represents 1.99% or 2% decrease. Our assumptions for the schools is just based upon the most recent vote. I believe it was last Thursday night, they voted, they voted $10,695,000 and change, which is actually an increase over FY '20 of $154,000. But a reduction from the consensus budget that the FinCom okayed and the Board of Selectmen okayed back in March, that reduced by $328,000. And the KES, KIS, they, they were proposing a $300,000 higher amount. Sorry. FY '21 is voted, is a $14 million, $401,000, which is an increase over FY '20 of $126,000. Reduction from the original consensus budget of $300,000. 56% of our budget is education, which, it's a, it's a big number. It's a number that most communities in Massachusetts are looking at. You know, some higher, some lower, but average, they have at least 50% of their budget is education. With this plan, our levy limit, we're going to be utilizing only 36% of our levy limit, levy capacity. And we're going to be leaving $1.5 million in excess capacity, which is inclusive of our debt exclusion. And what that means is, every year, we have so much debt, but some of it is excluded from being able to be, our ability to tax on that. So we don't want to use any of that, and we normally don't. So the real number of our excess capacity without the debt exclusion is approximately $550,000, I think, Carl.
That's the number I agree with, yes.
Right. So that's, that's significant in that the town never really wants to tax up to our levy limit. And it's been the town's position that we don't. Maybe eventually, somewhere down the road, we can vote for an underwrite, but with the given situation, that probably won't happen for a couple of years. The paying down of the debt, this is the first year we haven't had a substantial debt number on our books. Last year, we had $2.4 million, almost $2.5 million. And this year, we're looking at $1.1 million, which includes the payoff of the Davis ban. So after this year, our debt for the town will be somewhere in the range of less than $50,000, I believe. I'm sorry, $100,000. So that's, that's good. That's really good to be in this type of position for a bond rating agency. It puts us in a very good position to borrow money, should we need it. With this plan, there's a significant amount of reduction in workforce. And the departments most impacted by this will be facilities, the Board of Health Department, streets, trees, and parks, Council on Aging, Library and Transfer Station. As Tom had mentioned, we, the administration tried to work with everyone to make sure that we could limit some of these, but that didn't work. So this is the plan we have in force, and will be in force as of July 1st. It's, it represents a $1.2 million reduction from our consensus budget. Our consensus budget, we keep mentioning that. Our consensus budget was $49,712,000 back in March. FY '20's budget was $49,400,000, so it was only a $300,000 increase, as it was. However, with this change in times, not the uncertainty of revenue, what we've done is brought it down even further with the school's help to $48,448,000 and change. So it's, it's a, it was hard fought, it was a lot of work, but I'm glad everyone, the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee have agreed that this is the number, and they're happy with it. Carl, I think it's all up to you.
Okay. Thank you for the people that are online, watching us on television now. I think I'd like to start off with just a very general comment. I think it's important that we always remember that although town officials, the Board of Selectmen, school administrators, school committees, the Finance Committee, we all participate, and we all work in developing and the preparation of annual budgets. However, it is you, the residents, who vote for or against the budget at town meeting that determines in the final analysis, under what budget and financial conditions restraints the town operates during the next fiscal year. I think it cannot be understated the fact that, yes, we're the ones that try to help putting a budget together, but without the approval of the residents and town meeting, we can do no government expenditures. I think Tom and Carol have done a good job in kind of setting the stage for where we went from mid-December, when we always get the budget on the Finance Committee, to mid-March, where we try to be in a pretty good position of having a budget that's 95% ready for a town meeting. We then take the next three or four weeks to work with the town administration, work with some department managers, work with even the Board of Selectmen, to come up with, you know, a budget that we all agree to. And that's what, in effect, is called the consensus budget. I just want to say briefly where we were back in March, which is somewhat is a repetition from what Carol just presented, but in perhaps a little bit different format. Back then, we had projected revenues of $49.7 million. Thirty-six and a half of that comes from the tax levy, which a lot of you people know better as your real estate and personal property taxes. That accounts for 73% of the budget revenue. We also had at that time estimated $5.8 million from school and general state aid. That's another 12%. $5.8 million we were taking from local revenues, another 12%. The biggest two items there being $2 million or so that we get from automobile excise taxes that you all pay, and a million plus that we get from the ambulance billings. And then we have this other $1.8 million, which is the so-called non-town wind turbine revenue. This one, I'm going to gloss over pretty rapidly, because I think we've talked about it before. It's confusing as heck. We have $1.8 million sitting in revenue, and it's offset by $1.8 million sitting in expense. It's just a It's just a way of accounting for the ins and outs on the non-town turbine revenues. In other words, the turbine, the turbine, the wind turbines that are still running. The total expenses at that budget were forty nine point seven million, the same, of course, of, as the revenue. That was twenty five point seven million from education. Calculating it this way, it was fifty two percent of the budgeted expense. A lot of these percentages can be plus or minus two, three percent, depending upon what base you use to calculate it. For instance, if you take the one point eight million out of both revenue and expense, and then you calculate ratios, it's going to be a bit different. Six point four million was from the employee benefits, basically the pension and medical insurance that all our employees benefit by. Seven million dollars from public safety, by far the largest amount being your police and fire. That accounts for fourteen percent of the expenses. So if you take those three line items in the budget, education, public safety and employee benefits, you're talking eighty percent of the budget. The remaining twenty percent or so of the all other town departments, eight point seven million dollars, which includes general government, things like accounting and finance and assessors and treasurer, et cetera. Public Works, two point two million. That's the streets and parks and the transfer station. Culture, recreation, human services, et cetera, one point eight million. And the retirement of debt, one point one million. A, a, the, a couple of things I do want to mention on this is that this bottom line budget was, a- at this time, was an increase of two hundred and forty eight K over the FY twenty budget. However, I believe that's a bit misleading because as Carol mentioned, the debt service expense has been reduced greatly. So if, if you take out the debt service line, then you had an increase of one point six million or three point four percent. So the real budget increase at that time, back in March, of the operating departments, the schools, the police, the fire, everybody else, was approximately one point six million or three point four percent. This one point six million included almost nine hundred K from the schools, almost five hundred K from the employee benefits, which included what we hope is a one-time catch-up adjustment of close to three hundred K in pension expense. The pension expense, the town has very little control over. We are trying to catch up with the funding of pensions over a long period of time. I'm talking twenty, twenty-five years. And this is through Plymouth County. Plymouth County gives us the assessment for the expense each year. The other two hundred and fifty seven K came from all other departments. So police, fire, roads, transfer station, everything was only two fifty seven of the million six. So you can see that the drivers of this budget back in March were schools at almost nine hundred K increase from two thousand and twenty and employee benefits, almost five hundred K increase. So now this brings us to where we are now. I, I think that we all know what's gone on in the state. A couple of numbers that I find interesting. I have spoke with legislators. I have spoke with Massachusetts state school officials. I've spoke with many people. And you get different estimates of what is going to happen to state aid. Chapter seventy aid, which is the school aid, chapter ninety aid, which is the road aid, transportation aid, general aid. I've heard, had numbers thrown out from anywhere from a low of five percent to a high of twenty five percent. To put that in perspective, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has a budget of almost forty five billion dollars per year. And the experts are now projecting anywhere from a six to eight billion dollar shortfall on state revenues, income tax returns, sales tax returns, et cetera, et cetera. Those two numbers alone would represent a thirteen to eighteen percent reduction. That's why the town has chosen to use fifteen percent as kind of a middle-of-the-road conservative estimate as to what state aid reduction might be. As was mentioned previously, the thought was that we need to account for this possible fifteen percent reduction in state aid and another three hundred K reduction or so in the local revenues. So therefore, we're looking at a one point two million dollar reduction in revenues. And so we have to look for offsetting expense reductions. Recognize that I've heard some talk, you see it on Facebook, you see it places, that it's like one point two million is such a huge number. Absolutely is a bigger number that any of us want to see. But to put it in perspective, it's two point four percent, okay, of what the total revenues are that we're talking about, what the total expenses are. So that, yes, it's difficult, none of us want to do it. But I think it's important to recognize it's two point four percent. It's not fifteen percent school budget reductions, like I saw in one post. It's two point four percent. And so that's what we're challenged with. The, this, how did we make the decision? Or how was the decision made to say, let's see if we can find six hundred K in school budgets and six hundred K in town budgets? Very logical. The schools account for, as we've talked about, anywhere from fifty to sixty percent of the town budget, depending upon how you do the calculation. Therefore, it was decided, let's see if the schools can't provide around six hundred K. And then the idea was that, you know, leave it up to the schools and school administration. But a starting point would be three hundred K from the local schools and three hundred K from the assessment for the Silver Lake Regional Schools. So, so that, that's how we got, got there. I, I should also point out at the same time that the six hundred K suggested from education was, again, two point three percent of the school committee's approved budgets for Kingston. So now I've caught up to where Carol and Tom were to the current budget that I'm happy to say the Finance Committee voted today to recommend to town, in town meeting, and the Board of Selectmen recommended last night. That budget right now stands at forty eight point five million dollars. Included in there for revenue purposes is the same thirty six and a half million from the tax levy from your real estate taxes and from the personal property taxes. It's difficult to come up with an actual tax rate at this time. But when the budget is like this, I think it's safe to say that we're not going to see any increase in the tax rate. Individual taxes may change, but with additional growth in the town, et cetera, I believe that this budget is probably close to a stable tax rate. The state aid, as I said, has been reduced from five point eight million down to four point nine. The local receipts from five point eight down to five point five. The total expenses that this forty eight point five million in revenue will support is, again, twenty five point one million of educational expenses. That comes from the ten point seven million of Silver Lake Assessment, with the balance being the special ed expenses and the normal Kingston intermediate and elementary schools. We have six point eight million in public safety, police, fire. Six point seven million in employee benefits. Again, the one point eight million for wind turbines. Remember, you can almost ignore that. You've got one point eight million in revenue, you've got one point eight million in expense. You've got a little bit of a difference that Kingston gets to keep, you know, that project. Again, all other departments are a eight point one million dollar budget, led by general government at three point three, public works at two point two, et cetera. So that this represent, this budget, as Carol noted, represents the net reduction of two percent or nine hundred and eighty five K from the FY twenty budget. However, again, buried in that number is the fact that the debt service is greatly reduced this year. So when I pull that line out, the balance of the budget is an increase over two thousand and twenty of three hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars or eight tenths of a percent, less than one percent. That, that's the reason why I think it's safe to say that, you know, the, the tax rates should not increase. What makes up that three hundred and seventy seven K? Why do we have any increase at all? What makes it up? Our employee benefits increasing six hundred and ninety one K as a result of the one-time, we hope, pension expense increase. Medical insurance, anybody that works in industry or does anything in the private sector knows that medical insurance expense goes up almost every year. This year, we have in the budget now two percent. I, as a businessman, am always happy when medical insurance goes up anything less than seven percent. So that, that accounts for two hundred and forty K. As Carol said, we have to bake in some unemployment insurance expense for the layoffs that are in this budget. And the, the town is self-insured for unemployment insurance so that every time anybody gets laid off and starts collecting unemployment, that's really coming right out of the town expenses. While I'm talking about employee layoffs, I don't like employee layoffs, nobody ever does. But I also think it should be made clear that I, for one, do, and I know if you're an individual being laid off, it's significant. But I've read in the newspaper, as you have, I'm sure, Brookline talking about laying off three hundred and sixty teachers alone. Randolph talking about laying off fifty teachers alone, okay? I can tell you that this budget, and I don't have the exact number in front of me, but we are talking between schools and town, probably, almost assuredly, less than twenty bodies. And some of those bodies are part-timers. So that I think it's important to recognize that, yes, there are some layoffs in this budget, but they are as lean as possible. And I, I think it's significant to remember that we are trying to protect as many employees as possible and provide as many solid services to townspeople as we possibly can and get us through this financial crisis at the same time. So I've told you what the increases are. The education budget that we've provided, between Silver Lake Assessment and our local schools and special education, is a two hundred and eighty thousand dollar increase over the FY twenty budget. That's one point one percent. Is it what we would like to see? Absolutely not. But in fact, it is an increase and it, it is, I believe, somewhat unwarranted or unfair to read about the disastrous educational budget increases in the town of Kingston. Right now, it's difficult, but it's a lot more difficult in a lot of other towns. And I believe that our school administrations will be doing everything that they can in a proactive way to see that the fact that they're getting budget increases of three hundred K instead of eight or nine hundred K, they will work with that and they will continue to provide excellent education for our students. The reductions that we have had to put into this budget be, in, includes another six hundred K in the non-education. And I think the important thing to recognize there is that these budget reductions are coming across the board. There have been some fairly significant reductions in the library. There have been some reductions in the highway and solid waste departments. Police and fire have had to make some reductions. But I want to emphasize that there is not a police officer or a fireman being laid off. They have been able to make some reductions in such areas as eliminating reserves for any kind of new legal issue, eliminating some overtime or some training time that would have been used for non-mandated training. And especially in the fire department's case, in all of the extra things that they're having to do in the COVID nineteen environment, they have found it difficult to get in some of the extra training that the firemen like to do for their own benefit, for their professional advancement, for the benefit of the town. So I, I, I pat them on the back for doing that. And I also emphasize that this budget does not result in a layoff of a policeman or a fireman. Facilities is taking some reductions. Facilities is finding, is going to have to reduce some of the custodial staff. In most cases, we're talking, and I think in all cases, of having to eliminate some part-time custodial positions. Very unfortunate, but it, it's a commitment to keep the buildings clean, to, you know, maybe spend six hours a night cleaning one building and two hours cleaning another night instead of spending eight hours in the one building. Council on Aging is also another unfortunate one where we do have to take some reduction. One of the things that it's probably going to happen there is to eliminate the cook and the, the meals, prepared meals for a timeframe. But again, the, every effort is going to be made to maintain the services for the senior citizens at the Council on Aging in a more efficient, more productive manner. It may be that some hours of the building being open have to be eliminated. But a- as I used to always say in industry, sometimes you make some minor adjustments for all that are good for all people. So kind of, in conclusion here, the, I believe that the town administration, the finance departments, the functional departments, the fire and police chief, the facilities manager, the health agent, the conservation agent, all of these people have worked collaboratively together to develop a budget that minimizes the reduction in town services while preparing for fiscal realities of fiscal year two thousand and twenty one, which begins July first. I'm also going on record, and I have discussed this with many people, if in fact, the town revenue if in fact the town revenue numbers, the state aid revenue numbers or our local aid revenue numbers are stronger than we have anticipated in this budget, we will be the first ones going to town meeting in November, reallocating found money, so to speak, to the departments, to the schools, to be able to bring back some of the services that we may have had to reduce somewhat to begin with. Finally, I commend the local and Silver Lake school administrators for adjusting their budgets in an attempt to help us all get through this budget year. I commend the school administrations, I mean, the school committees, for working with those school administrations to try to come up with acceptable numbers for both administrations, for the committees, and for us townspeople who want to see the highest quality education we possibly can, but at the same time, be able to maintain financially responsible budgets in a difficult time. And finally, I think I need to bring up now that although we have voted the total town budget, including the local schools, we did not, we chose not to vote the final Silver Lake Assessment budget because there's a Silver Lake School Committee meeting scheduled for tomorrow night, Thursday night, to possibly revisit the budget. And we want to wait until that particular final, final number is known before we, as a Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen, did the same thing, vote a recommendation to town meeting concerning, concerning that assessment budget. I, I think that's about all I have at this moment. I want to thank everybody for the time and consideration. I want to reemphasize that it's you people, the residents, you people, the town meeting voters, who determine the final budget that Kingston will live with in FY2021. By your votes on town meeting floor, you're the ones that set the final budget. Not Carol, not Kyle, not Tom, not anyone else. It, it's the voters who come up with the final approval and provide the authorization that lets Kingston go forward with a budget. Thank you. And Carol, I welcome your comments, anything on what I have said or haven't said, and go from there.
Okay. No, I think you put it very eloquently. The Silver Lake is an issue. We don't know what's going to happen. If, I know what you're going to have in your warrant represents $10,695,000 and change, but that may need to be changed based on tomorrow night's vote. So keep that in mind. And again, it is up to the voters as far as what we spend your money on. We hope you agree with our plan. And, you know, we think it's a good plan. We've spent a lot of time and energy on it. And a lot of hard decisions were made by the administration and by the department heads that helped, helped in the development of the plan. With the, with the notion that we didn't want town services to be affected. That was, that was the most important. And in addition to having town services not be, is affected as much, having the workforce not be affected as much as well. So I thank you for your time. And I look forward to seeing everyone on Saturday.
I thank you, Carol, for all of your effort in putting together and coordinating this budget that was provided to the Finance Committee and to all the residents. Thank you again, and we look forward to seeing you Saturday morning for town meeting. Good day.
Very good. Bye-bye.